So Kim, if it goes too long, can we take a break?
Yes. And if I don't remember, somebody text me and tell me.
I'll remember.
Who will remember? Paul. I bet you will.
Is that at the two-hour mark or something?
Yeah, so should I aim for a break at 8:30? Or after the presentation?
8:30 sounds fine. I think that's a good spot.
Remember, the debate starts at nine, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
I mean, people would like to watch a debate?
Well, I was gonna say I'd prefer to be here than there, but, you know.
Me too. But I don't think we'd ever change my mind.
I already voted, so it's a little late. Yeah.
Actually, it was really easy doing it early, putting.
It was. There was nobody in line. It was very quick.
Do we have a quorum? Let's see. That's a quorum. So Liam is not going to be here, and Rick probably not. Is Jeff going to be here? And so since we don't have a secretary or a vice chair, who will call the roll?
Kim, John Olivera has his hand raised in the attendees list.
Yep.
I believe Jeff will be here.
Oh, so John hasn't been elevated yet.
So John is trying to get in.
Is Steve in yet?
Steve's here.
Okay, good. Forty-three. That's not a lot, huh?
Sorry, Steve.
Oh, here's John.
There's only forty-three people so far. I'm surprised.
As soon as you're ready, Peter, we'll begin.
Let me just double-check that Granicus is working.
Okay. And Melissa, do you want to call the roll to do the secretary responsibilities? Okay, this, John.
Can I check with Jeff?
Mm-hmm. Please.
So Kim, I'll read this at the beginning of the meeting before we actually start, just so people know the ground rules. I'll read this at the beginning.
As soon as we get the A-OK from Peter.
Yep. Oh my. Peter's running down the stairs.
All right, I think we're good.
Thank you. Okay, Trish.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin the meeting by going over our virtual meeting procedures. This meeting will be held remotely in compliance with Governor Ramondo's Executive Order 2025-1A. reads, "Such means may include, without limitation, providing public access through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of the public body while those activities are occurring." Next, please. "A note for the meeting participants and attendees. Please be advised that this online meeting is being recorded. This includes all audio, video, and names. All members of the public who wish to comment during this meeting must correctly identify themselves, including name and address, before proceeding." Next. "Planning Board members, please turn your video on. To prevent echoes, mute your microphone while not speaking. Please use the spacebar to temporarily unmute. Please connect to the audio via phone for redundancy. Do not use on-a-computer audio at the same time. Use the 'Raise Hand' button in the Participants panel to be recognized by the Chair. At any time, call 401-845-5472, or email pfriedrichs@cityofnewport.com to communicate any issues with the audio or video to the moderator. And remember to please be professional." Next, please. "Members of the public wishing to speak. When the Chair calls for public questions, raise your hand via the Participants panel. For those of you on the phone, press *9 to raise your hand. The moderator will promote you so that you can turn your video on when it's your turn to ask your question. You will need to unmute yourself, *6 for those on the phone, and clearly state your name and address. At any time, please call the line 845-5472, or email pfriedrichs@cityofnewport.com to communicate any issues with the audio or video to the moderator. And remember to please be respectful." Next slide, please. That ends our meeting procedures. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the City of Newport Planning Board. I called the meeting to order. It is 6:37. Will Melissa please call the roll?
Kim Salerno.
Here.
Jeff Brooks.
Here.
Liam Barry. Stephen Berlucci.
Here.
Elizabeth Fuerte.
Here.
Richard Haggis. Paul Marshall.
Here.
John Olivera.
Here.
Melissa Padavina. Here. Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First on the agenda are the minutes. Will anyone abstain from this vote? Is there a motion to approve the October 5, 2020 minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Melissa, will you please record the vote?
Kim Salerno.
Aye.
Jeff Brooks.
Aye.
Stephen Berlucci.
Aye.
Elizabeth Fuerte.
Aye.
Paul Marshall.
Aye.
John Olivera.
Aye.
Melissa Padavina. Aye. The motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are communications. Since the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to introduce the North End Urban Plan to the community, this letter speaks to the plan. We have a letter from the Health Equity Zone, Housing and Greening Urban Spaces Working Groups, requesting greater focus on community benefits in the North End Urban Plan. So we will receive the letter now, and later in the process, we will invite a representative of the signatories to speak to the letter. Are there any members of the board who wish to comment on this communication at this point? Hearing none. Received. Next on the agenda is business. Welcome again. Welcome to this presentation of the North End Urban Plan. I just have a little bit of an introduction to this. The ideas presented in this plan have been a long time in the making, and over the years, the city has developed a strategy for accepting de-accesioned state and federal lands, including the Navy hospital site and excess lands from RIDEOT's ramp realignment. Through significant public engagement, this strategy was matured in the 2017 Comprehensive Plan as it presented a directive for economic development in the North End that would build on the city's existing strengths and expand employment opportunities for those who need it most. The purpose of planning is to promote engagement and consensus around overarching themes and goals. In the 2017 Comp Plan, the first economic goal is to develop a robust and diverse economy, providing suitable employment opportunity for residents and a stable tax base. This goal is both a march toward equity as well as a broad benefit for taxpayers. The first related policy is to support primary economic drivers while seeking to attract and grow the technology sector and businesses that represent innovative concepts. This is a balancing act which requires careful consideration. The second economic policy calls for the implementation of innovation hub plans. Goals LU1, LU2, H1, H2, T1 through T5, those are all land use, housing, and transportation goals. And much of the water chapter are relevant and important in developing the North End Urban Plan. The Tree and Open Space Plan, as well as the Aquidnic Island Westside Master Plan, have influenced this plan. Tonight, this plan presented achieves economic policy goals, yet it does much more. It refines our community aspirations of inclusion, fairness, and sustainability. It aims to improve the quality of place-making in a city that is renowned for its beauty. It provides guidance for a streamlined regulatory process that will encourage growth while protecting residents. In addition to being an economic development plan, it is an area plan for the northern part of the city. It protects some areas while encouraging change in other areas. It directs investments for years to come, but most importantly, it is a statement of values. Tonight, I'm asking you to view the presentation with an open mind. We will hear from those who prepared the plan, and the board members who will steward the plan, and the public who will be impacted by the plan. This will produce a healthy discussion and ultimately a better plan. The process tonight will unfold in this way. We will be recording the presentation for future viewing. And this video will be published on the Planning Board webpage as well as the Granicus streaming site. First, staff will provide a brief overview of the planning process. Next, the consultants will present a brief summary of the North End Urban Plan. I request that board members refrain from interrupting during the presentation and hold all questions until the end. After this, board members will query the consultant. Finally, the public hearing will open, and we will invite questions from the audience. The public may submit questions now in writing to peterfriedrichs@pfriedrichs@cityofnewport.com. That's the same email. Or later in the evening by using the 'Raise Hand' feature. Questions will not be answered this evening. They will be compiled and answered for the November 5 meeting. People may submit questions after tonight. You may submit them to Peter, or staff, or Trish via email, regular mail, or telephone to 401-845-5472 until the end of the month. At 9:30 this evening, or if no one else wishes to speak, we will continue the public hearing to November 5. At that meeting, after the questions are answered, we will invite you to give additional comments. We may need to schedule a third meeting. Once the public has fully weighed in, the Planning Board will consider amendments to the Comp Plan, and you will have the opportunity to comment on those amendments. Finally, the Board will complete its task by forwarding a recommendation to the Council. With that, I would like to hand this over to NBBJ, the consultant team that produced the plan.
Madam Chair, I think actually I should go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Um. This is Patricia Reynolds. I'm the Planning and Economic Development Director, and I'd like to begin tonight with a short presentation about what led to the creation of the North End Urban Plan and why it's so important to future development. So you can see on your screen this aerial view of the north end of the city. We're looking south, and you can see for orientation, Myan Tanomi Park on the left side. The north end of the city is the youngest part, and this is reflected in its character. Developed in the 20th century, the north end area is car-oriented and has large areas devoted to single uses. This is in contrast to the walkable mixed-use density of the rest of the city. And you can see we've labeled here large parking expanses and expressways that are clearly oriented to cars, and there are large shopping centers that are devoted to just one use such as retail. Next slide, please. "The north end is disconnected both physically and economically." Next slide, please. "Access between the north end to downtown Newport and to the southern tip of the city is not organized to connect us, but the realignment of the Pell Bridge will remove large physical barriers of expressway and overpass, offering an opportunity to reconnect and to improve citywide access." Next slide, please. "Comprehensive plans are roadmaps for how to develop cities and towns. Updated in 2017, the City of Newport's Comprehensive Plan is the city's guiding policy document covering broad aspects of life in Newport. It was recreated with the input from the citizens of Newport and approved by the City Council. State law requires the city's Comprehensive Plan to be written with at least a 20-year vision and be fully updated every 10 years. The Comprehensive Plan can be amended as needed at any time during its tenure adoption. Just like the creation of the Plan, updating the Comprehensive Plan requires public input and can include public hearings of both the Planning Board and City Council, as well as approval by the state." Next slide, please. "The Comprehensive Plan has 15 chapters, and most of these are mandated by state law. So all of the cities and towns throughout the state include the same topic chapters. I've included some examples of four of the mandatory chapters. One is economic development, transportation and circulation, open space and recreation, and housing. Chapter 3 is a really important chapter. It's our land use chapter. Land use is the term for what land can be used for, such as business or residential activities, and what can be built on the land, such as tall buildings or small houses. Planning land use is important to make sure that residents can live in, work in, and enjoy their city." Next slide, please. "The land use chapter describes the future north end commercial neighborhood as an innovation hub. In other words, in an area with mixed commercial and residential uses. The existing neighborhoods will continue to be residentialist now and into the future. While the existing residential neighborhoods are not expected to have great change, the existing commercial area is intended to be redeveloped to promote future jobs and opportunities and to attract and help small and startup types of businesses, especially those focused on future needs in environment and technology industries. And I'd like to just take a moment to go back over the points that we had just talked about. One thing that we know is that the north end is disconnected physically and economically. We know that with the Pell Bridge ramp realignment, there'll be opportunities to reconnect the north end, and new land will be made available for future development. We know from the Comprehensive Plan that Newporters see the future of the north end commercial area as an opportunity to diversify the city's economy with a focus on innovation. But as we begin to move forward, there were still some questions that we felt needed to be answered, and this led us to create the North End Urban Plan." Next slide, please. "We began by building the plan on these three basic purposes: to repair a century of separation between the north end and the rest of Newport, to fulfill the city's economic development goals around supporting an innovation economy and providing a clear vision for development." Next slide, please. "And with these project goals, to build community understanding of key issues and investment in process, to create a bold statement for 21st-century Newport living, to support sustainable development practices of specially renewable energy generation and microgrid opportunities, to provide visual guidance to developers, decision-makers, and the public, to connect the north end with downtown Newport, healing the physical separation, and to support dense, diverse development that creates amenities and street life welcoming to the public in the north end." Next slide, please. "And the way that we wanted to do this is on a foundation of public engagement, to engage the public early, deeply, and respectfully, to empower them to develop and share their ideas for how to best implement the project purpose, to respect the deadlines set by the City Council through the Moratorium on Development Plan Review in the Innovation Hub in the north end, and to incorporate the North End Urban Plan into the Comprehensive Plan by reference. After an extensive search process, NBBAJA was selected as the consultant that best addressed the plan goals and its foundation of community outreach. NBBJ's project team includes the Engagement Lab for public outreach, Halverson for landscape design, McMahon Associates for transportation planning, Source One for renewable energy advising, and Code Studio for code consulting. After many months of hard work, we're here tonight to introduce the North End Urban Plan and begin the public comment process." Next slide, please. "The 2017 Comprehensive Plan is the foundation for the North End Urban Plan. The goal is to make the North End Urban Plan part of the city's Comprehensive Plan. This will make it part of our roadmap for how to develop our city. This action is considered to be an amendment to the Comp Plan. It's a process that's called incorporating by reference. Incorporating the North End Urban Plan also requires some changes to our 2017 Comprehensive Plan. These changes are to introduce the North End Urban Plan and address any necessary edits and updates." Next slide, please. "Comprehensive plans serve as the foundation for municipal zoning. The plan sets the goals, and the zoning accomplishes the goals. By state law, zoning is required to be consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan. So incorporating the North End Urban Plan into the city's Comprehensive Plan makes it an important tool to guide future development and inform zoning. And with that, I'd like to introduce, from NBBJ, Alan Mountjoy, the principal in charge, and Chris Hurlitz, the project manager, to take us through the urban plan itself. Thank you."
Thank you, Trish.
Good evening.
I assume that you all can see our screen? Yeah. Great. All right. Thank you again, Trish, for setting us up and framing the conversation tonight. I think that was some very helpful context for people. Tonight, Alan and I are going to discuss these four items in relation to the North End Urban Plan. We plan on giving a bit of an overview of the development process for that plan, how we got to the plan, and describe public engagement in a little bit more detail. We'll walk you through the vision for the plan, which was first outlined in the city's call for consultants. Then we'll discuss the planning themes and summarize the recommendations that came out of the planning process and those planning themes, and then we'll leave you with a few notes on implementation of the plan, the specific actions that the plan calls for. So Trish showed a map earlier of the study area in dark purple in the Comprehensive Plan's land use map. Here, the North End Urban Plan itself took three separate geographies into consideration. The first was the broader study area, which you can see outlined in black here. That's a dotted black line. It's a fairly large area that also considers the neighborhoods, some larger open spaces, and some developed areas closer to the waterfront as well. However, when we're considering rezoning in the context of the Comprehensive Plan, the mixed-use innovation district, as the plan refers to it, the rezoning area is a smaller area. That's outlined in red here with a faint purple. And then the plan also considered the RIDEOT parcels that were mentioned previously, and those are in dark purple outlined in black here. So the plan itself, again, considers recommendations across the entire study area. It only makes recommendations for zoning changes within the red outlined area called the mixed-use innovation district, and it gives special consideration to redevelopment on the parcels that are labeled RIDEOT parcels here, since those present significant opportunities for redevelopment in the future. As part of our process, we conducted an existing conditions analysis. This was an analysis of prior concurrent plans. We looked at what other city agencies were doing with the planning and community development department, or planning and development department had done previously. What state agencies were doing, talked to the Navy as well to understand their intentions for the future of the Navy Station Newport. We did inventories of the study area, so we walked through. We observed as much as we could across much of the study area to get a sense of what was happening on-site. And we conducted site visits and focus groups to meet with people, and we'll describe some of those a bit later. But as I mentioned, we're looking across a number of different topic areas here. Of course, the RIDEOT Pell Bridge realignment was something that influenced the planning significantly, but we also looked at issues of sustainability related to flooding. Transportation, of course, is a major issue, so we looked at what the transportation resources were within the north end and what might be needed. And if we looked at some of the existing amenities and resources that the community relies on, such as open space and recreation areas. So we did conduct a fairly extensive public engagement process. It began in January, and we had three specific goals. We wanted to listen to make sure that the community's voices were heard. We wanted to educate so that we could clarify what this plan does and doesn't do, because we knew there was some confusion around its relationship to the Pell realignment and to zoning and all of that. So we wanted to make sure that people understood exactly what we were hoping to accomplish. And we wanted to facilitate some discussion, because this, as a planning exercise, is going to be a trade-off, a series of trade-offs that need to be made by the community. So we wanted to help people establish what their core values were for the north end and then understand what the trade-offs would be. So you can see here, looking at the right side of this slide, we've engaged with hundreds, if not thousands, of people across the city since January. We had to change our approach a bit, which I'll describe in a moment, but we were still able to reach 350 people individually, just one-on-one conversations or contacts that we'd made via electronic communication or in person. They represented. They represented, they represented more than 60 different organizations across the city. We had meetings with advocates and local experts. We held small group meetings, focus groups, mapping activities that kept the community directly involved, drawing on the study area to understand exactly what their concerns were, what the problem areas might be, and what even some potential solutions might be. And of course, we had a project website via Co-Organize, where we had over 1,200 visitors over the course of the project. And we've also been in conversations with city councillors as well. Each of the city councillors has engaged directly with the plan or the planners to understand what our concerns were and for us to understand what their concerns were as well. There was also a steering committee, which helped guide our work. It was a chance for many key stakeholders across the city to weigh in. These were, again, some business owners. There were local experts, members of the public who are involved civically across the city. It was a good opportunity for them to give some feedback on the process and guide our development of contact, content. The members on the steering committee came from across the city. As I mentioned, they're drawn from a number of different organizations, drawn from different neighborhoods. But the North End was well represented. And it was a series of very productive conversations that helped us frame our thinking about the plan. We're also tasked with a public forum week, which happened in February. We held two days of drop-in hours, which were publicized, and essentially just the planning team was in Newport for those days in, in a room. Anyone could come talk to us over the course of those two days to share their thoughts on the site and their thoughts on the plan. We also held a public workshop in between those two days of drop-in hours, so people could learn a little bit about the plan before the workshop and then come with questions after if they had them. At the public workshop, we had approximately 140 members of the public. You can see that we got them directly involved in the process. The bottom three images there show the results, some of the results of this exercise, where we, again, were having people tell us very specifically where they saw problems, where they saw opportunities. People were writing on maps, drawing on maps. We created some really long lists of potential recommendations and potential concerns that all helped feed into our recommendations and our understanding of the planning area. We did impart through this exercise some of the planning themes, which we'll get to later. And then in, in March, unfortunately, we had to change the format of our second public forum week. This was originally planned to be similar to the first week, but we had to move it online due to state and city regulations about gatherings in public as a response to the public health crisis. So we instead created an online survey that was also available by print upon request. This was open for two months and contained approximately 46 questions that people could answer. There were graphic prompts. There were some narrative to help people understand what the issues were. But we let people interact with this very much as they desired on their own terms and on their own timeline. So there were 148 substantially complete responses, and all but 20 of those people completed every question in, in the survey. They spent time on every single question. That large majority of respondents also spent really significant amounts of time giving very, very thoughtful feedback, very useful feedback. Two-thirds of people spent more than 20 minutes answering questions, which for a survey is quite rare. The questions were in a number of formats that people could respond to. There were certainly specific prompts, but we left many chances for open response as well, so that people could provide their own feedback in their own way if they didn't feel like our prompts were getting them, the, getting to the, the answers that they wanted to provide. And coming out of all of that engagement and our own study of the area, we came back to this, this vision that the plan was attempting to establish. This is our charge or the charge for the plan as described by the city planners. This city shall be a bold statement for 21st century American living. It will connect the North End with downtown Newport, healing their separation by an elevated expressway for the last half century. Now, in order to reach that, in order to formulate a plan that really helps achieve that vision, we used, we structured the plan around five planning themes, which Alan will now describe for you.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Alan Mountjoy. I'm a principal with MBV J, and I will be describing the planning themes, recommendations that came out of the public process that Chris Hurlich just described for you. So if we can go to the themes, these were the themes that we introduced at the first workshop and received plenty of feedback on. These are the themes that have continued to organize the recommendations. What you see here are the goals for each theme. I, I won't necessarily read all these, but diversify economic opportunities. I think Trish mentioned this. Connectivity to connect the North End to many locations, actually. Resiliency to create long-term resiliency and sustainability, especially because of the risk of flooding in this area. And equity to achieve, achieve an equitable future. This has a lot to do with potential public benefits that can come out of the redevelopment of the North End through public and private investments. And lastly, quality was a big issue for many people who felt that, given the fact that this is the gateway to the city, that the quality, the, the impression that it gives when people arrive in, in Newport has to be, has to reflect the architectural character of, of the city where, that it does not do currently. So if we can go to the recommendations, and by the way, this is all in the study. So the opportunity section begins on page 50 of the study of the plan. I think, as has been mentioned many times, this is following upon the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan, that this is primarily an area to enhance the job opportunities of Newporters and enhance the economic activity in the city. We know that there's plenty of activity going on here already. Many cases, our goal is to preserve those activities that provide entrepreneurship opportunities for people in the city. In other cases, there are uses here that are, really can't be located anywhere else. Your water treatment facility, for example. And many, there was quite a bit of support for much of the existing land uses like shopping, which provide a valuable resource for the community. With that said, however, I think there was a fair bit of desire to make sure that it is more than just a single-use district, that there were opportunities for limited amounts of housing, for hotels, for other kinds of uses that might support a more active and vibrant environment with certain limits, in order to make sure that we don't take away from the primary purpose of this district, which is a jobs-generating place. What you see on the map on page 50 is also, instead of one single district thought about as a single monolithic district, the plan takes a look at sub-districts within this district that have slightly different focuses of use. And we would welcome questions on this. For instance, the areas that the gateway to the city will be more mixed-use focused, whereas some of the areas that are more semi-industrial might be less suitable or compatible with housing, for example. So if you go to the next slide, Chris, you can see that there are, in, in that section, there are examples of various types of uses that we anticipate, and each of the sub-districts has slightly different mixes of these uses. And we'll get more into much of the quality of these spaces, such as height or density in the quality section in, at the end. This is, this section is more focused on the kinds of land uses that we're looking for. So if you go to the next section. The second theme is about connectivity, which we have lots of recommendations on. As you recall, reconnecting the city was one of the goals here. And taking advantage of the removal of the highway really offers enormous opportunities to reconnect places that have been separated for quite a long time. One of the recommendations coming out of this was, as is proposed by Rideout, to create an intermodal center. We made a recommendation that that intermodal center should be as close as possible to mixed-use districts. We made a recommendation about extending Halsey Street, which was contemplated by Rideout, but not included in their plan. This would, for many reasons, relieve lots of pressure on Cottington and Gerard, which currently carry the bulk of traffic through the district in the north-south direction. And then we made plenty of recommendations for east-west connections that would be achievable once the highway is removed, but most of these connections are pedestrian or bicycle. A way to connect neighborhoods without burdening them with additional traffic, but providing for residents to get to the waterfront, for residents to get to businesses without having to go on really busy thoroughfares like Admiral Calvis. But I think it's also important to know that, that we embraced the rail-trail extent, concept, rail and trail concept, and a bike lane on Calvis and Cottington, which is part of the Rideout Plan. And that forms the backbone of a very robust alternative transportation network. And we simply recommended that additional connections be made. And then where intersections were, were flagged by residents as particularly dangerous, and sadly, many of the intersections were flagged as dangerous or intimidating, we recommended improvements in pedestrian accommodations at those locations. So Chris, if you can go to the next slide, there's just a couple of illustrations here of what we mean. Certainly, the, many of you may be familiar with the rendering on the left, which is the rail and trail proposed. Certainly an important feature here to, to improve north-south connection. But on the right, another illustration of what a, what a complete street might look like. That would, yes, of course, it's going to accommodate vehicles, but it would also accommodate pedestrians and cyclists in a way that is much more, much better balanced than the roads that go through the district today. And these are both recommendations for improvements to existing roads, but also recommendations for future roads that would be built within project sites by potential developers, such as the former Hyalae site. So if you go to the next slide, Chris, the, the, the third theme is resiliency, which I mentioned before. I think Chris showed an example of just how vulnerable this area is to both periodic flooding, which we witnessed during the project, during the period of the project, but also from much longer-term threats of sea level rise. So this is an area that is potentially threatened by these things. And our strategy is to find ways in which the land, some of the land that is left over from the highway can be repurposed for flood control features. And meant, and of course, not just flood control features, but multi-use open spaces that can be both floodable, but also provide for recreational uses habitat when they're not, in fact, flooded. We identified some areas for upstream remediation, where neighborhoods are vulnerable to local flooding. And then, as you'll see in the end, we may, we require, we established certain minimum standards for additional open space for all future redevelopment projects. And then lastly, we made some rather perhaps bold recommendations about how Navy land that is outside of the security perimeter of the Navy State Naval Station could, in fact, over time, become publicly accessible and accessible to the neighborhoods and the residents of this area and become an asset, given the length of waterfront in the district. So if you go to the next one, Chris, our, oh, sorry. The image here is of one of these multipurpose open spaces that provides floodwater storage, floodwater conveyance, but also provides an amenity for the adjacent districts, and in some cases, buffers between uses that may not be quite so compatible, such as semi-industrial uses with mixed uses, and also create recreational opportunities in close proximity to future working places and residential areas. So if you go to the, the fourth theme is equity, and it was a subject of much discussion in all of our groups. And through our initial public outreach, where we identified a very long list, as Chris said, of potential public benefits, we, we identified all of them and included them in our survey during our online survey. And we were able to get a fairly good understanding of those who responded to the survey, general preferences as to what kinds of public benefits they would be most interested in. And I think one of the, one of the items that we didn't mention as public benefits, of course, is all the infrastructure improvements like bike paths and additional open spaces and improved intersections. But specifically, we were asking people for such things as civic amenities. Were they interested in a library in the North End? How important was housing to them, especially housing that would be affordable to those who are being priced out of either housing that is market rate or who are, make too much to live in public housing? And how can we find, how can we build housing that would be usable by them? Opportunities for recreational uses, we heard many things that, and we ranked all of these. And then opportunities for entrepreneurial and small businesses. This was the ranking of those large categories, but even within those categories, there were subcategories of rankings that we received and are included in the plan in the, in the appendix for those of you who are interested in looking at the preferences. I think, so Chris, if you go to the next slide, I think it's important to know that these are, these can be implemented in a number of ways. In many cases, they could be implemented directly by the city on land that becomes available once Rideout gives up ownership of those lands, and the city could actually build them themselves. Perhaps more realistically, if the city has budget issues, these, many of these amenities could be requested of developers to provide as part of a amenity package in return for approval of their development projects. So we are certainly aware that there is an implementation aspect to this, and we're looking forward to working with the city and on the zoning to figure out how the zoning and approvals process can be leveraged as well as possible to achieve some of these community benefits through the approvals of various projects and also through city budgets. So Chris, if you can go to the next one, the last subject or theme was quality. And of course, as many of us know, the moratorium that was placed on the Hyalae site had much to do with the perceived quality of the development. So we were very aware of how important it was to establish the right quality. But we didn't stop just there. We looked at all of the corridors, such as JT Connell and Admiral Calvis, and we identified ways in which those streets could be improved, both in terms of aesthetics, but in many cases, in terms of safety and green, additional adding of green space to make them more amenable to the way Newport considers itself, as well as improving looks of things like large parking lots in front of buildings that we think could be slowly, over time, relocated to side yards and such. A lot of this has to do with scale of development. And I think what you will notice in the report is that there is a section at the end, which is the which is the design guidelines that will help establish the kinds of regulatory direction that we would like to see. So you can also see here, yeah, so here's an example of the design guidelines that are included in the, in the, in the plan that are very useful, a tool, let's say, for, for the city to advise potential developers on what they expect to see, as well as informing future infrastructure improvements that the city itself might build, or RIDOT for that matter, on public rights of way. So there, that section is quite detailed. We were asked to provide a very complete set of design guidelines that include even the way in which future redevelopment sites might size and space their roadways and their blocks and provide access to the blocks. Again, these are tools that can be used by the planning board, by city staff, to engage in discussions with developers to achieve the kind of results that everybody wants to see here. Chris, I think if you go to the next slide, there's, there's perhaps a a bit of an illustration, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna end with three illustrations of how we envision some of these guidelines being realized in places. This, for example, is a, is an example of what we call an active core street within an urban village district. These would be the kinds of streets we would like to see in future redevelopment sites. These are smaller streets with on-street parking, adequate areas with tree cover, places for outdoor seating and generous sidewalks. These would be the reference images for future redevelopment of large-scale sites. The next slide shows a picture-
Sorry, Alan. Could you go back real quick, Chris? Yeah, just to orient people, this would be standing on J.T. Connell Highway, looking towards my Antonomi Park, that's my Antonomi Tower in the background there. So this is where the RK Center is now, at Walmart, in Southern Shop.
Yeah, this was a suggestion, an illustration of what might happen over time should the RK Center redevelop, and certainly would provide access to the hill, to the heights in a more direct way than it does today. But would depend, of course, on agreement with the developer to redevelop. But the guidelines would be set up to establish this kind of look and feel should that project ever be redeveloped. The next slide is an example of where we might also influence and impact RIDOT on their planning for future roadways, particularly the Pell Bridge Approach roads, which in many ways were designed to look more like highways. And yes, they are wide, but they can also be enhanced with additional bike and pedestrian accommodations. And the streets, the buildings along them can be designed in such a way that they make it more comfortable for pedestrians. And crossings can be designed in such a way that they're much safer for pedestrians along the way. So these are, again, illustrations of potential futures using the design guidelines that we've established. And lastly, the last image is of a, a illustration of what a future park might look like with, with the requirements, as I mentioned earlier, of a required open space within each future redevelopment site. The numbers are 5%, but of course, this will all be taken up in the zoning language that is, that will follow this plan. We think that that creates sufficient open spaces that will be publicly accessible and usable. In this case, this is a view looking from the former Hyalai site out towards the bridge, the Pell Bridge, looking west. Again, it's a hypothetical illustration of a potential park that would be created through specific design guidelines established in the plan.
And I think it's also-
I agree.
I think it's also worth noting that the, the guidelines and zoning not only would establish minimum open space requirements in terms of space, but the guidelines would also establish some, some more specific design requirements for the open space and what they would accomplish. So, or about orientation, size, you know, 5%, not just overall, but that space would have to be meaningful and usable by the public, couldn't just be jurisdictional.
That second image we saw, that was just the boulevard, which is currently Halsey Street, is in this rendering as well, it's going from left to right.
Yes, that would be-
If you go to the third image, it's got the boulevard in the middle going from left to right.
Correct. Again, we're, we're, these are illustrations of the guidelines in, in effect. Again, the ultimate design of a site such as the former Hyalai site will be, will be driven by a potential developer, but the guidelines will be in the hands of city staff and the planning board and the city council theoretically, to ensure that there is design control on future development as part of the negotiation process. Go to the last image, Chris. I think we wanted to end with sort of a very brief description of our implementation actions. Many of them have to do with development. And I think I've mentioned many of them, embracing Newport's existing context, history, geography, that has to do with design guidelines, prioritizing job creation, that has to, support of the underlying zoning. But also being aware that additional ancillary uses are not bad, but they can't overwhelm the purpose of jobs. And then specifically important to everyone here is what kinds of community benefit agreements will come out of these with various developers and residents. And that process needs to be established through the zoning process. And then the plan is also meant to direct and guide infrastructure actions, particularly making sure that we are taking a strong position with RIDOT to make sure that this feels like Newport, even though there are significant traffic requirements for these roadways that connect to the Pell Bridge. And then making sure that we are continuing to push for climate preparations for climate change, and this has to do with some of the, our discussion about smart grids and making sure that we are thinking about the future of low-energy, zero-carbon. And then, again, public buildings, an opportunity here to build public buildings on some of the former roadway sites and making decisions about how those could improve the lives of people in the North End by locating these, those public uses closer, closer to neighborhoods that can benefit. And with that, I will hand it back to, who's taking the questions? Kim, is that you?
Okay, so now what I would like to do is invite board members to ask the planners questions, either about the plan or even any thoughts that arose while you were watching the presentation. But I'd like to focus on questions rather than assessments. And let's see. You're with me while I fix my screen.
I'll go.
Okay, so Steve, why don't you ask a question?
I, I, I think I have a few. My first question is, will, will the traffic pattern and be changed in the existing North End from the bridge towards town?
Well, there's actually a limited number of streets that connect the North End to downtown. And our study area ends at pretty much south of the existing ramp. So as we all know, Farewell Street is very difficult to expand. So that is the limit. I think the purpose of this plan is to get as many people out of their cars as possible and to make sure that we have both an intermodal center and alternative means of traveling. It would seem that there's a bit of a bottleneck at Farewell Street, but I don't think anybody wants to make changes there. And we certainly don't want to run traffic through residential neighborhoods.
So what we have on the screen now is one of the most recent plans from RIDOT. There are some pretty significant changes proposed to the roadway under their, under their plans. I think in general, traffic patterns between this part of the city and downtown are going to be similar, but it's the way the bridge lands in the North End is the most significant change.
Hey, guys, Jeff Broke speaking. To expand on Steve's question on traffic and thoroughfare, you guys made a big push for opening up Halsey Corridor, which, you know, I, I know part of the big thing, one of the bigger things was connecting, bringing that in. But that three-block stretch of Halsey from Van Zandt to basically where they capped it off, where it hits the Traysman Center and Transfer Station and all that. Like, I don't, I don't understand, A, I don't understand kind of the idea on how you're connecting it through. And then B, is it going to be more of a promotion on connecting for pedestrian bicycle traffic and diverting vehicle traffic? Or is it going to be a corridor for vehicles as well?
So the, the, between Admiral Calvis and Garfield and Van Zandt in here, it's going to be just potentially bike and pedestrian connection, which is effectively what it is now, vehicles can't get through, but those on foot or on bike could. The connection or the expansion that Alan was describing earlier is actually to the north from Admiral Calvis to Cottington Highway. This would be the part where we would recommend vehicular access.
Thank you. So then, and that's, you're just calling that Halsey, that-
Yes.
There, okay.
Yeah.
I guess the proper term would be Halsey Street Extension, given that it doesn't exist today.
Would that, is any of that land currently city-owned, or would that have to be repaired?
We understand that a fair bit of it is RIDOT, a fair bit of it is city-owned. There is a small section in the middle that is RK. So it would require a, some sort of agreement with RK and could, in fact, be well-timed with any redevelopment of RK, should that ever happen.
And the connection at the north, I think the city is actually disposing of that land to a private owner, but there are, as part of that agreement, there are easements, public easements that are guaranteed. So a path could continue where, on what once was public land, but there would still be public access.
So I have a couple of questions. And a more general note, when, when you did the existing conditions analysis, what was the most unexpected thing you learned about the site? And then what was the most challenging thing?
Well, I, let me be very, very blunt about this. I think that the transfer station and the city the city municipal yard is one of the biggest challenges that we face. Those are not easy uses to remove or to relocate. So we are, while I think we're, we're trying our best to recreate, to recast the gateway of the city, the municipal yard and the transfer facility are, unless they're moved, they will always be a challenge to the quality of the area. So I think that that is not something that we can take lightly in terms of relocating those uses. So we're going to be working around them for quite some time. And it will be a big challenge for the city to, to relocate those.
I think another challenge that we spent a lot of time with was making sure, and you can tell by the structure of this presentation, you know, quality was a much bigger piece of the themes and recommendations than the others in a lot of ways, because we were really trying to find a way to balance the character of Newport, the kinds of scale and the kinds of development that the city and the public were looking for in this part of the city with not precluding redevelopment. You know, if this, if nothing ever changes here, if nothing ever gets built because it's too onerous on developers, then, you know, that we're no better off than we are now. So, so striking that balance between fostering quality, requiring quality, but also allowing enough flexibility that redevelopment could occur.
Thank you. Other board members, other board members?
I see Steve.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, Alan, I have to kind of disagree with you on the importance of relocating a DPW. They can go anywhere. The real importance that you kind of miss is the sewer treatment plant. It's located at the lowest elevation that we have. We just spent $72 million rebuilding it. If that goes down, the city goes down. I think that is the most important issue that has been non-adressed on how to protect that asset, because the other stuff is inconsequential. They can be moved anywhere. They can be moved to Middletown. And the second one is Elizabeth Brook. That's the second most important thing in this whole project, because unless you can control the flooding there, then the whole district is not going to work.
So I just want to interrupt you and say that right now, we're looking for questions so that we can elucidate-
Okay, so that's my question.
Instead of making assessments. So let's form it in the, in the way of a question.
Okay, the question is, how are you going to protect our $72 million investment in our sewer treatment plant? Secondly, how are the city going to handle the big flooding issue at the roundabout with Elizabeth Brook? I know you're just going to say money, but if those two issues aren't handled, the rest of the issues are insignificant, because it won't work. And then I got a couple of other questions. So it looks like all of the traffic going into downtown Newport is going down Farewell Street? Because we certain, the people, the point between the bridge and the city, I don't think want all of the traffic going down there. So that's an issue I'm going to ask you about. Let me look at this. And, and as far as right of refusal for all of this property, doesn't it go from the federal government to the county government down to the city government? In other words, everybody assuming that the city of Newport is going to have first right of refusal for this property, where I may think it would be the county's first right of refusal above, above the city of Newport. So just some questions there.
Steve, I might be able to handle some of those. So for the disposition of land one, the Department of Transportation is a section of the state, and the state property is controlled through the State Properties Committee. And they have laws that affect their operations as well as procedures. There's a law that stipulates that any land that's- There's a law that stipulates that any land that's dispossessed by the state that was condemned through the powers of eminent domain has to first be offered to the person that it was taken from.
Right.
Not their heirs, the actual person. And then if that person is not interested or no longer alive, then the city has second right of refusal. That's what, that's what the state law is on that matter. And then in terms of bringing, of putting traffic through the point, I don't think anyone has any interest in proposing additional automobile traffic through the point. I think the point, residents have made that very, very clear that outside traffic, vehicular traffic shouldn't avoid that neighborhood however possible. And I think DOT is very aware of that and respects that desire. And their bridge design, bridge approaches design reflects that. And maybe someone has a better answer on the rotary flooding and the necessity to protect the water plant. Those are two issues that are very near and dear to our utilities director. But to your point, they're very, they're very big issues and also not easily resolved.
Kim, do you want us to try to answer those questions or just move on?
You can answer board members' questions, but we, yes, board members, yes. When we get to the public part, that will just start to accumulate and then you can reflect on.
Okay, so Steve, I think this, this diagram illustrates that the sewage treatment plant is actually not in the flood, flood prone areas. The flood prone areas of those areas.
It should be noted currently.
Currently, right. There is, there is the, but the potential for future sea level rise that it could be, but it is not in an area that is immediately at risk. It is considerably higher than the areas around the rotary, which are at the greatest risk for flooding. And I, if we didn't say this clearly enough, the purpose of all of that green space that we're showing immediately down to the south of the rotary that intercepts Elizabeth Brook is that that forms a storage area for Elizabeth Brook as a storage area to capture stormwater coming off the hill. And that is a multipurpose area that will be a way to store and absorb potentially some of the stormwater, as well as taking advantage of the leftover dirt from RIDOT to elevate building parcels within this area that get redeveloped to keep them out of the floodplain.
I think, I think one other thing to note here, we are also recommending a district floodgate. So Alan was talking about the water that was flowing downhill. But we recognize that with sea level rise and even, you know, king tides these days, there is backup from the harbor into Elizabeth Brook of seawater. And so ultimately a floodgate, which you can see here near the top of the screen, would help mitigate some of the sea level rise issues that could impact these areas. So between, between the multipurpose green spaces that act as storage in the district floodgate, the idea is to address these both from upstream and downstream sources.
Chris, can you show us the illustration that goes along with the storage for Elizabeth Brook too? I think that's really helpful. So not only is the storage area, that's, you know, it acts as a feature in the district.
It, it looks good.
Okay, I, I mean, let's be clear. Additional engineering would be necessary to determine what level of flooding this might protect from. It, you know, we would have to make sure, I think part of the sizing of this facility would be dependent upon future engineering of the flows coming down Elizabeth Brook in order to make sure we're covering the 100-year storm and maybe, maybe even more.
That was going to be my exact question, whether you size this out or not. But obviously you slid through that very nicely. Congratulations.
Further study on the size and the depth of it would be necessary.
In cost?
Indeed.
Cost mitigation, big time.
Well, the good news is that the land is available, assuming that the city is able to receive the land. The land is unbuilt upon and the current facility there is badly choked with weeds and phragmities that make the storage capacities there significantly diminished. And it's in a current state.
Great for geese.
Yeah, and blackbirds.
Yes. Madam Chair, it's Jeff again, if I have a question.
Actually, let's go to Paul Marshall.
Sure, sorry, Paul, go for it.
Jeff's more than willing to go ahead of me. I'm totally okay with taking the next.
I, I, this question's more directed towards staff or to MEVJ. But a big, to like, from the way I'm reading it, to really make this work, the, the shared streets and development of the streets and corridors is paramount to have any of the form-based code actually make sense with how the roads are all laid out. So how, is that going to fall under DOT on making sure that like Admiral Calvis and JT Connell Highway get opened up and bike paths and everything else? Or is that going to be part of the shared agreement with developers when they're coming in and trying, you know, RK's developing up down Connell and that kind of thing? I don't know who I'm directing the question to.
No, my, my, Jeff, my question was pretty similar. So I can expand on that.
Alan, do you want to take that?
Well, I, I will, and then maybe Peter can, can follow up on that. Certainly, the RIDOT and the city are in fact implementing the bikeway along Cottington, JT, on JT Connell Cottington Road currently. So RIDOT is picking up a lot of the heavy lifting on building what I call the backbone of the off-road bicycle facilities. And that's great. What I think what the design guidelines are primarily meant to do is to direct RIDOT's efforts on what we might call Halsey Street after it arrives, after it touches down, if you will, between its touchdown point and Admiral Calvis. We do not want that to feel like a highway. We want it to feel like a city street. And then the future roadways that might and probably will have to be built within the larger redevelopment sites, particularly the Highali site, that's where the design guidelines would be the most applicable because it's hard to imagine a 25-acre site being built without a set of roadways within it. And so there's the opportunity to implement the guidelines.
And I'll say that the Pell Bridge Approaches project is kind of a once-in-a-generation get. And we absolutely do not want, do not want to jeopardize the investment that DOT is making in Newport. That being said, you know, we need to push them as hard as we can to get our desired outcome. So the community's been very involved over the, over the years in directing what they're looking to see out of that project. And the city staff have been working, you know, more closely with DOT as the project has moved forward. But if this plan is adopted ultimately, and it, you know, it's got a few steps to go between now and then, then that will give the city a lot more, you know, heft to its ask. And we'll have more clear directive about, you know, there'll be things like, well, you know, can DOT make an investment on one side of the street? And, you know, knowing that we're going to have changes on the other side of the street? We'll have a clear picture of how best to spend that, that big federal money.
So in short, it's basically we work with RIDOT to deal with the arterials and the main thoroughfares and then work with developers to work on the feeder roads and the, the urban village roads or whatever we call the secondary roads.
I think you get whatever money you can. So, you know, anytime you can get those federal, the state and federal dollars, you, you go after it. And so if there's an opportunity, then we'll certainly pursue it.
I, I might add that it's possible that certain intersections might be tied to impact fees of certain developers that might trigger some need for an improvement at a particular intersection if there's anticipated additional traffic. So we can imagine a, let's say Admiral Calvis and Gerard Avenue might be funded by a developer, for instance, if there's a particular need to enhance that intersection. Just as a case, as a, as an example.
So Paul, do you have more to add to the question?
Yes, I do. Cause I, I was expanding, it's expanding a little bit off Jeff's, but I want to be a little, I want to get a little clearer answer. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns with, you know, the timeline of the bridge realignment and, and land being given back to the city. But there's kind of an overlap of what can this, the question I have is what can the city do based off this plan that can help incentivize the, the like long-term goals of this area? So I guess like when I'm reading this plan, I'm just curious, is there actionable items? Or of some sort, or is that will be, are there actionable items that can be provided that the city can work on, work towards to help improve this area in the meantime? As a lot of, a lot of issues come to play.
To Steve's point, water is, is the biggest money. So that, that, that's going to require a lot of leadership and a lot of dollars. And those dollars can take a long time to produce. So that's definitely a place to start and that will impact future development. So if, if, you know, if this area is behind a levy, it instantly changes the flood zone category. It changes the flood insurance requirements for property owners. So that would be a huge change. We also need to be able to, you know, to the point earlier about the stormwater storage, that would be an early thing to focus on to, to, to really understand how much water you can handle and how much water you need to be slowing down prior to that central storage point. And then I think one of the other big ticket possible investments from this plan is energy. So if you're looking at a microgrid, that's something that you want to do early and understand what the capacity is so that you can have uses that then fit into that.
And Paul, I want to add, one of the most basic things that we can do is have a plan in place so we have direction for developers. A plan with a companion zoning so they know what to expect and sort of what the rules are of developing in an area. And so that's one of the first things the city could do in that type of infrastructure is to have this plan and the zoning in place to start development actions.
Thank you.
Any other questions by board members? It'd take a while to kind of take it in and, and think about it.
Hey, I have one more question. Cause I, I think it was alluded to a lot in the, in the presentation. And then I have a feeling that a few of our attendees probably will be asking the same question. And it goes back to the, the letter that was submitted to the planning board prior to this. Is this, and maybe it goes back to the plan. Is this a plan that can have benefits built into it that are aligned? Or is it something that needs to go be attached to zoning? And how, how do you, how do you make sure that whatever the community and the residents of Newport want is portrayed in, in this? So there's some, some weight to it. And I mean, it's a pretty open-ended question, but just trying to understand the process of how that would work and if it should be in this plan or attached to zoning in some capacity.
Can I, can I start that one just quickly? So as we've been developing the plan and we've been working on the zoning community benefits agreements, been a big topic of conversation. And we have heard from the community. And we will be adding language to, or proposing language to add to page 105 of this urban plan, which is in the chapter four, implementation, development actions, to provide greater direction on community benefits agreements. And that language will be available for our next meeting for people to review. So I just want, before we started to enter, before we let Alan and Chris answer that with the relationship with zoning, I just wanted to make sure that people know that we do know that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And we are planning to add some stronger language to page 105 of the plan to address it.
But the template in the agreement itself is something that will be in, the template or the framework for constructing agreements across the different parcels will have to be in zoning.
Right, I think, I think this plan, this plan lays out the specific benefits that the community is looking for and starts to prioritize them. But the actual, as Kim and Tricia both said, the actual implementation of those benefits will happen through other mechanisms. This plan is more about establishing the goals.
I think it's also important to remember that this, these, these preferences, they, you know, it's a fairly new list and it's the beginning of a conversation about what people actually want for civic amenities. So this is not a static process. There are other questions by board members for the, the, the design team. Jeff, no? Okay. No more questions. So if we have no more questions, we can actually take a brief recess and then open up for public questions. Are we good with that? Okay, so let's take a five-minute recess and we'll be back at eight. Thank you. Back at eight.
Oh.
I can't hear anything.
No one's talking.
Oh, that's why. All right. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, we're all just sitting quietly.
Thank you. I thought we were dead.
Okay, so are we all back? Actually, Chris and Alan.
We are here.
Okay. So that went a little faster than I expected, and I think that because we had the chance to ask the consultants some questions, we would actually feel questions from the public as well and see if we can separate out the ones that are, that, that the consultants can answer quickly and easily. So now I will open the public hearing. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium, raise your hand. State your name and address for the record and state your question. Please be brief. And again, some questions may not be answered tonight if they will involve some thought and they are complex. Has anyone submitted any questions to you, Peter? Or Melissa? Melissa? No. Does, does any member of the public have a question?
I'm just watching. We have, we have a couple of hands going up and.
So let's start with Lily. Lily Dick was the first one? Hello? Hi.
Hi. So my question is, how did, maybe I don't understand it, but was told you referenced 5% open space. And how did you arrive at that? And could you explain the open space component and what the 5% meant?
Sure. So we looked at, for example, the former Hyalai site, which is 25, approximately 25 acres and identified, I think that if I'm not wrong, the amount of open space of 5% would be slightly over an acre. If I have my math correct, which is a fairly significant piece of open space. However, we did not identify it having to be one single or multiples, but that is a, that's, that's not a unreasonable amount of open space. That, however, is on parcels that aren't already slated for open space that would be required for stormwater protection. So in other words, the, the much larger areas are anticipated for stormwater. Those are not, those are publicly owned parcels on sites where the highway is being removed. The, so we're not asking private developers on parcels to provide the stormwater storage. That is being provided within the public realm.
Above and beyond the established statutory requirements.
Above and beyond the 5% that's required of any individual developer. And obviously, we wouldn't require that of very small parcels. It would only be parcels over a certain size. And I don't think we've established exactly what that is, but it would certainly apply to big parcels like the Hyalai facility.
Is there a reference that we can understand why it's 5% and not 4% or 6% or? Why, why 5%?
It was a recommendation of our zoning consultants that they're, they usually use a 5% open space for their projects.
For, for areas of similar contexts, similar.
Like mixed, mixed-use kind of districts that have a mix of, of office, residential and retail mixes.
And, and the, the actual requirement, again, will be established via zoning, which has not been settled yet, to my knowledge. So I think, you know, while, while the plan has recommendations and guidelines, the actual requirement has not yet been determined.
So am I allowed a second question?
Yes.
So you mentioned, you meant, you referenced that, that a developer wouldn't be required to, to include stormwater. I'm not quite sure what you said, stormwater.
So they, I think, yeah, I, I think, I think it was easy to misinterpret that statement. What, they would be required to manage onsite their stormwater as they would be anywhere else in, in state or city. And Alan's point was more that they would not be tasked with taking on necessarily the stormwater needs of the entire district.
Right. Okay. Well, then my question is, are they required to ameliorate stormwater issues within their site, you know, within the property that they own so that, so that whatever they do on their site doesn't exacerbate stormwater issues?
Downstream.
Downstream. Yes, thank you.
Yes, we did not establish new requirements. We will, we were going to stick with city requirements for stormwater treatment. That may be a place where we could, you know, increase the requirements, but no, we did, we would use city requirements for site plan review and treatment. Peter, maybe you would, I can elaborate on what the current standards are for.
The, the city is very, very strict currently when it is reviewed. And so one of the things that's been noticed recently is there are a lot of projects that are not reviewed. So I believe, I think it's more in the zoning where we talk about what would be reviewed in this district moving forward. There is a bit of a, a, not necessarily a pure connection between development and a comprehensive plan, because a zoning ordinance is what actually will require a plan, a development to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you, you want to make sure that you're, you're getting your development in the right way, so that if someone, you know, is putting up an ice cream stand, they don't have undue burdens. But if someone is cutting, you know, coming in and putting in a pizza parlor, maybe, you know, they have a little bit more of requirements for, for things they need to do to make sure they're not impacting things like stormwater.
Chris, to expand on Lily's question?
Thank you.
Do you guys have a slide on, from your character-based code where you guys reference the site area, open space, its use within the active core? That kind of thing?
Not on a slide, but it is part of the document. So yeah. Couldn't vote easily for you right now, but.
Yeah, each of the sub-districts have their own open space requirements, as well as height restrictions. You know, density, all that kind of thing are within the guidelines at a sub-district level. So for instance, the area that is the, what we're calling the gateway sort of village district, that has, that has a specific open space requirement. Whereas sites.
Maker Tech would be.
Right. Whereas sites along JT Connell do not have a specified open space requirement. I think it's, is it shown there? Yeah. Five, 5%, yeah.
It's very small text.
The, the urban, the urban village was the only one that mandated open space, though. The business corridor and Maker Tech didn't mandate open space, correct?
Right. And, and that's because these are primarily, you know, working spaces. They, they benefit from our larger open space concepts, but they do not, it, it did not seem necessary for those areas to provide additional open space other than corridors that were already, that we were establishing as part of a larger framework.
And many of those parcels on the non-urban village three or non-urban village five districts, those are, those are smaller parcels. Right. Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't benefit from the same open space requirements.
Lily, do you have any other questions?
Well, my, I'm sorry to keep asking questions. I promise this is the last one. Do you, and maybe just don't get down to this level, do you propose that the streetscape should be landscaped and are there any requirements for trees? For instance, I'm concerned that the the Pell Bridge came, you know, off ramps, phase one came in and just took out 11 trees of, you know, sizable diameter breast height. And they say they're going to replace them, but I just want to make sure that there is some requirement for landscaping, including trees, because obviously they have huge benefit, many benefits.
Yes, and the streetscape standards all have street tree requirements with minimum widths for the planting areas and minimum widths for sidewalks. All of those are specified in the, in the design guidelines.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so is that it, Lily?
That's it.
Any additional questions from board members?
I do.
Okay. Yes.
Are we ready? You know, I, I, I kind of have, I kind of have one. The whole bottleneck to this whole development is going to be getting traffic in and getting traffic out. And I say a bottleneck, it really is a cork. You're going to be having all the people coming over the bridge that still want to head north and a limited amount of people coming over the bridge that are going to head into Newport. The real issue that has to be solved is how to get the people that come over the bridge north without going down East Main and West Main. There has to be a corridor. I know it's true. I know it's through the Navy. There has to be a corridor that'll get us through the Navy down Burma Road and take, alleviate all the congestion on those two East Main and West Main roads, or else this whole thing is just a bottleneck. I love it. I love the development. So everything works, but everything is stalled. So that was a really piece of the puzzle that I know Alan, you probably may have looked at macroly, but you're really looking at stuff microly. And the board has to realize that that's a huge component of what we're, we're, we're looking at. And.
What's the question? What's the question?
Alan, have you looked at macroly, where is the traffic going to go when they come over the bridge and end up in this beautiful innovation district with all this nice fancy stuff? And they're stalled in traffic. Where are they going to go?
Well, our traffic consultants did mostly focus on the, as you would say, the micro in the sense of everything within the study district. So I think what you're talking about are things that are well outside of the, of this area. We know that a lot of traffic heads north on Cottington and a lot goes east on Calves. Those are really the only two ways north from this area. And we did not attempt to suggest any alternatives to that. That is the existing condition, and we want to make those, you know, as pedestrian-friendly as possible. But we did not look outside of the study area for larger regional Equid neck island circulate. But we did not look outside of the study area for larger regional Equid neck island circulation patterns.
And I think it's also very important to note that, uh, the traffic that you're describing uh, is completely dependent on the types of new development that are going to be here. And, you know, while we can make recommendations for land uses and while the city can change zoning, uh, you know, each each development will have to, I I'm assuming, take take into account a transfer, transportation impact study, uh, which will help describe its specific impacts on local and neighborhood traffic. So we we can't really say in in a large sense what traffic is, how traffic is going to change. Because at this point, we just don't know exactly what specific developments will be proposed.
And just for clarification, Trish, will you please tell us the status of the transportation master plan? Turn up your mute, please.
Oh.
Trish, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, I was muted. Um, that's what I was just going to do. The city is just about to embark on its first, um, ever citywide transportation master plan. We're working in combination with statewide planning. Um, and we are going to put together a comprehensive look at the traffic throughout the city and the parking conditions throughout the city. And we're going to look at ways to address all of those different issues. And certainly the development in the North End will be considered as part of that overall citywide transportation master plan. We are right now, we have issued an RFP and we have had respondents. There's a review panel that's been convened, that's in the process of selecting one of the four, uh, consultants, all of which were very qualified. And we're about to embark on that two year process of a statewide, of a citywide, uh, transportation plan. And I just would like to mention as part of this, uh, that there is going to be a meeting held on Tuesday. DOT is going to, uh, reveal the current plans for the Pell Bridge ramp realignment. It's a city hall style meeting, uh, and the Zoom information is online. And then on Thursday, there'll be a meeting held by the state to, uh, uh, talk about their long range transportation plan. And all of these different planning and planning efforts are going to be coming together to hopefully address some of these traffic issues that you're talking about.
And Steve, the Equiniquity on Planning Commission has been doing a ton of work on Burma Road. And the the kind of big push at least a year ago, uh, was for the state to buy that from the Navy. Uh, because the road is owned by the Navy, at least that's my understanding. But getting, you know, getting from Concon Highway to the Burma Road is the challenging part because you can't get on base without a pass.
So Peter, what would that, what would that take to for, to continue that road through? It's the only avenue. I know it'll take an act of Congress. But I think the process should start. It it's really the only logical solution.
So I just want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to inter- interject now. Um, we have the the consultants here and briefly, so I'd like to avail them to the, uh, questioners in the audience.
But Steve, I can talk to you offline and I can connect you to AIPC.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay, so it looks like, uh, we don't have very many questions. Next is Rex LeBeau.
Hi, my name's Rex LeBeau. I live at 118 Ruggles Avenue and my pronouns are they, them, theirs. Uh, Alan, I heard in the presentation, um, that you mentioned the cliff effect and, um, also that residents in the North End, um, might be at risk of displacement with the, um, rising property values that this overall plan seems to indicate will probably happen with all of these. So really, um, with all these improvements, then I'm wondering, do you have any recommendations on mitigating displacement of of residents in that area?
Hi, Rex. Well, I I think it's important to note that a fair bit of the housing, uh, is publicly owned. So some of that is, uh, protected. Uh, you're correct, though, that some of it is privately owned and currently under some kinds of a variety of subsidies, uh, section eight, I suppose, things like that. Uh, so yes, there is always that risk. Um, I I think we are not trying to rezone those areas, so there's no, uh, direct, direct impact in that way. I think there's a recognition that new housing should be provided as an ancillary use to the development that we're talking about as a way of providing additional housing supply to offset any additional job employment, uh, to keep people on island, uh, so that we don't, you know, exacerbate commuting. Um, you know, the fact is that prices are rising in every coastal area around the United States. It's a desirable place to live. It's happening already. I think, I think we decided that, uh, our our argument here is that the affordable housing needs to be a citywide policy as opposed to a district wide policy. So if affordability is a, is a big concern, I think the city needs to take on a a larger affordability effort, um, uh, aimed at preserving, uh, affordable housing. On the other hand, I think that the North End is a great opportunity to provide housing that is affordable, perhaps not subsidized, but affordable to people who, uh, will be getting jobs in these locations. So I think that there's some benefits to be had. I I would note also that there is an opportunity through the zoning for developers to provide more housing if they provide more affordable housing. And, uh, this is a standard procedure that many cities, uh, are doing where where, uh, developers are asked to contribute affordable units as some percentage of the total number of units as a way of preserving, uh, affordability in areas that are getting quite pricey, like places like where Chris and I are from in in the Boston area. So it's not, it's not foreign to imagine, uh, developers providing both housing at market rate, but also providing some portion of those at affordable rates. Uh, but I think that is a, that has to be negotiated at the, within the zoning process.
Thank you.
That, Madam Chair, if I may, respond on that. Uh, Rex, the 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 city of Newport, I think we meet our affordable housing mandate by like sixteen percent where the the state requirement is ten percent. I think towns like Middletown and Portsmouth need to step up and meet their uh, requirement for affordable, uh, housing affordability, which will in turn help us. And with this development, I personally hope it'll add a substantial amount of housing stock, which should in turn help help increase affordability and just increase options for people on where to live. Just like how, uh, the Cranston Calvert School, uh, development with micro units should be able to help with housing affordability overall. But that's just my.
Rex, is that it?
Um, I mean, I don't know, I I guess it's not really a question, but I just feel like just comment means breaking up communities. Um, so I'm kind of left with a bad taste on that. And I would really hope to see that we don't reduce or lose any of our community. Um, and I hope preserving the community is also a priority.
So I I think that, uh, community is a priority. And I think that maybe, uh, we we will actually take your question written and share, give it to the consultant and allow them to, um, develop an answer that we can post on the, um, the planning site that may, um, further address your concerns.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, who's next? Uh, Gene Reisman.
Thank you, uh, Gene Reisman. Um, so that's okay. Um, 291 Tuckerman Avenue in Middletown, um. I do work for the Newport Health Equity Zone and, um, our working groups have been looking more closely at the existing, the, uh, final draft plan. Um, and I'm sure there will be many questions that result from that review process. I have two questions. One is actually somewhat procedural in the sense that it sounds like there is going to be language added to the plan a- as it currently is written. Um, it was mentioned to be page 105. It sounded like it might be about community, um, benefits agreements. And it's difficult to imagine how we can actually review language for the next meeting that won't be there for the next meeting. Until, I mean, until the next meeting. And I also feel as if I saw in the slideshow some new language and even some new drawings. And so I'm feeling a little challenged about are we responding to the text and the images as presented in the final draft? Or are we now responding to additional language and images that we're seeing in the slides? And what about language we won't see until November 5th?
Trish, do you want to answer that?
Yes, Gene, thank you very much. So you know that we've been, uh, in the planning department of the planning board, uh, listening to the community in regards to community benefits agreements. And, um, and we have received communications back from, uh, the heads in the housing working group regarding these. And we are starting to work together on some language that we can add to that page 105 under development actions. And we will try to get that ready as soon as possible, but it will most likely be very close to what you have presented as your concerns and your options, and we will try to address those the best that we can. Um, so we certainly will have that as ready, uh, and we will be, uh, open with, to communicate with you in the meantime. And we will try to give you as much time and as Kim, the chairperson, the chairman said at the beginning of the meeting, that if we feel, uh, on November 5th that there's more time that's needed to review that, we certainly will consider that as an option.
Um, I I also have a second question, if, uh, that's okay with the chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. In describing public and community benefits, I'm wondering if we could get a little bit more amplification about the fact that there are community, there's some places and moments where community benefits seem to be directed toward the North End residential community as the residential community that is in the study area and part of, you know, an obvious place for both ripple effects from development and outstanding um, conditions and needs that come in part from, um, you know, being affected by an elevated highway fifty years ago. Um, in other parts of the discussion about potential benefits and amenities, it seems as if some of those are going to be directed toward not current residents, but potential future residents of the Innovation District and or residents citywide. And I'm wondering if we can get any more precision about how those distinctions get made and how the arguments will unfold um, in a larger discussion about what public and community benefits actually means.
Alan?
Well, let let me just jump in. Hi, Gene. Um, I I think that the, what we did, uh, was to identify a variety of community uh, driven amenities that, uh, those who participated in this process were interested in. I wouldn't say there was complete agreement, uh, by any means on all of these amenities. It is, I think there's many opportunities for these, uh, public benefits to be realized. Some of them, I think, as I said before, some of them will come about as a result of discussions with developers. Some of them could get built on public property, uh, that is available at some future date. Uh, so I think there are multiple pathways to public benefits. And I think that really makes sense to think about where they're going to be. They have to be thought about on a very site by site basis. I don't think you can think about it in the absence of location. And I think it's only fair that a developer would also want to make sure that those spaces suit the needs of their future office workers and residents. So what we really need to do is find common ground between those uses that new residents and existing residents will find mutually compatible. I think that's what you're looking for. Um, it should not be an either or. It really has, you have to find common ground of uses that will be uh, usable. And I think that's where the negotiation goes with either developers or on public property that is publicly funded, um, improvements. So that that is a discussion for a later day, I believe.
And I think it's also important to note that the community benefits that are described in the plan come from the community. They come from North End residents. They come from other residents of Newport. You know, that's not, that's not the list that, uh, any developer handed to us. Uh, you know, this was a list generated by the people of the city. Um, and I completely understand your point, Gene, that, um, it might not be in all instances a perfect match to what all of the residents of the neighborhood want or need. Um, but we think it is fairly reflective, or we think it's very reflective of the comments that we heard in our conversations with people in the North End and across the city. Um, I I want to emphasize what Alan was saying. I think that, yeah, these community benefits, these amenities that we're describing are really going to be most valuable to the city when they welcome everyone. When they welcome the new residents and they welcome existing residents and create a space for those two groups to interact. Uh, I I think that's, that's where we get the most value out of those community benefits.
Follow up question, um. Wouldn't it be incumbent on a developer to put amenities on the table for whoever the users and, you know, for the, for for the desired traffic and, um, and users of the future development rather than looking to a public negotiation process to provide those? Why isn't that up to a developer to generate? Um, as opposed to putting in one pool the idea that a developer could essentially decide not to invest in something that would then become negotiable and and draw from a potential pool of resources that could go it in an, on another unfulfilled direction.
It's not unheard of to have impact fees. Uh, I'm not sure the city is ready to move in that direction where every development contributes to a fund that goes towards public improvements of some sort. It's certainly not unheard of. I think the the easiest course for the city would be to have it constructed and built by the developer. Um, so there's certainly ease of of, um, uh, in.
Implementation sake.
For implementation sake, I think it's easier for the city. I think what's important is that every time a developer comes forward under the zoning regime that is being proposed, they will have to negotiate with the planning board and city council. And that is where the, that is where the, and maybe, uh, Trish can explain that a little bit more fully. Anybody seeking to, um, get a develop, propose development here will have to go through a rezoning. Um, and that will trigger a variety of review procedures, public hearings as well as, uh, design review, site plan review, all of those things, uh, that are part and parcel of any sophisticated negotiation with a developer. What the tools that we brought here was design guidelines to ensure that the look and the feel is consistent and a list of 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 discussed public benefits that is a starting point for a discussion with a developer. And I'm not sure that the plan can be asked to go much further than that. Um, I think the rest of it has to be done in the implementation phases as we move forward.
And I think it's also worth noting that I, I don't know that it's necessarily the right way to look at it, that because we have described priorities that lets a developer off the hook somehow. I think the fact, as Alan said, that we're creating a starting point and creating a baseline with this plan, it means that any development that's going to come under consideration has to meet a minimum threshold. They, they can't show up with nothing in terms of community benefits to a rezoning process because that's just, that's a nonstarter. And I think they, there is an establishment of an expectation that a developer is going to provide things, not just for their own users, but for the broader community.
Okay, let's move on to Christian, Christian Beldon.
Hi, everybody. Christian Beldon. I live at six Newport Ave here in Newport. I'm the executive director of Church Community Housing Corporation, and we are the lead housing agency for the housing working group. I may have, maybe I should have lowered my hand because Rex and Jean's questions pretty well summarized everything that I was going to ask, but I would, I suppose, just add that you know, I absolutely understand that the, the plan is really the vision document, the long-term, you know, policy document that and that the zoning is the implementation. But to that, to that point, I think to the extent that the plan lists specific goals for preventing gentrification and displacement and making the future development as equitable as possible, it then will guide the zoning so that the zoning will then make that happen. And so I'm just hoping it sounds like we've heard that there are going to be, there's going to be some new language that directly addresses this. I'm really happy to hear that. And I, you know, eagerly await to seeing what that language is because you know, I'm hoping that this, this plan will become much more robust in terms of its recommendations for improving the equity components and preventing displacement. So sorry, not really a question. My question's already asked, but thank you. It's been, it's been good to hear what's, what's happening.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to ask phone number 1-973-885-0006 to speak. There's no name, but they're next.
This is Tim Harrington, Four Lakesview Avenue in Newport. I have the following question. By this time next year, the state of Rhode Island will have a deficit of more than a billion dollars. It's highly probable if something doesn't happen quickly, that the state is going to say that the the feeder roads to nowhere can sit for a few more years without being changed. What will that do to your plan? What I'm saying is it's highly likely that the 50 plus million dollars is not going to be available. Take those bridges down. They've been sitting there since 1970. They'll probably say they're going to sit there a little longer, given the impact of this virus.
Trish, do you want to answer this question?
Sure. Hi, Tim, this is Trish. The money for the Pell Bridge project has already been allocated and is reserved for this project. So we're not expecting that to be affected by the COVID and the budget issues related to COVID. You know, COVID cutbacks and tax issues. So we are expecting the bridge project to move forward. And as we know, you know, we talked about earlier on that planning is sort of a long-term vision. And a lot of these things are not expected to happen anyway, right away. It's something that's going to be put in place as a vision for the next couple of decades. And we are going to try to enact those as, as we can and as we're able to do that. But we're not expecting that the bridge project is sort of the foundation or the starting point for this is going to be impacted by the, the current budget situation.
I understand that. I think it's, it's fine. Just recognize that they're sitting on one and a quarter billion dollar, trillion dollars, a billion, billions from the feds, which much of it was supposed to be sent down to towns like Newport. And of course Providence is sitting on it because of the conditions up there. Sounds like you've got it under control. Just don't count your chickens. They can change. As Tiverton learned with their gambling casino money, which all of a sudden they're not getting.
Do you have any additional questions, Tim?
No, you guys have done a very good job on this project.
Thank you.
Kim, can I, I would like to respond to Christian's comment before. And I'm urging the board also to review the equity section of the report because there is a significant amount of language in there that speaks to equity in housing, equity in job and entrepreneurial opportunities, equity in open space. There is a lot of language in there and it was perhaps not well represented in this presentation. But there is actually a significant amount of language in the report, in the, in the, in the plan on equity. So we may not be, may not need to provide a whole lot more language on that subject. So just, just to be aware that there is a fair bit of language already in the study, in the, in the plan.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll invite Jonathan Baggett to come up.
Hello. No, this is actually Marcel Abago.
Okay.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everybody. I live on Calves Road, 63 Admiral Calves Road. And my question, of course, has to do with the bridge realignment. As you well know, the traffic that we experience on our street, it's incredible. And we feel overburdened by the amount of traffic on this, on our street, on Calves, going towards West Main Road. So the question is that how can a plan about the North End not include a way to alleviate the traffic that we presently have? And that we have been having for at least the past 20 years, 18 years when, when we bought our house. So this is something that has to be addressed because our quality of life, we cannot speak about quality of life or improvement of a community when the houses that have been built between the 30s and 50s, like the ones along Calves Road are not being considered as far as how the traffic makes it very difficult for us to live here. Not just in terms of, of the, we cannot even get out of a driveways. It's very difficult and it's very dangerous to do so. The, the trucks, the speed, the 25 mile an hour speed limits that we have on the sidewalks mean absolutely nothing. Nobody respects us in particular. All the heavy traffic that goes on this corridor from, from where the highway to nowhere ends all the way to West Main Road. We need to address that. That has to be a priority. And that surprises me that it hasn't been addressed.
Um, so Peter, I'm sorry, Peter.
Unfortunately, yeah, that, that road was, that road was built before the bridge. And even before JT Connell Highway. And so when it was built, and the houses that are along it weren't designed for the, the level of traffic that it's carrying. And unfortunately, it is one of the few through east-west roads in that area. I think the easiest thing would be if signage coming off the bridge directed traffic to Cottington Highway. And that, that would do a great service to taking some of the pressure off of Admiral Calves Road. But it's, it's a really tough situation because that is the major east-west corridor over there. It's even more of an east-west corridor than Maple Ave and Van Zandt Ave. So it is, it is a challenge, absolutely.
I think one, one thing that this plan does and one thing that the city maybe is undertaking in another effort can help address these issues in addition to the things that Peter just suggested. One thing that we focus a lot on in the North End urban plan is rebalancing transportation infrastructure to encourage people to use other modes besides cars. And that goes for residents and it goes for visitors. I think we fully have recognized that traffic is already very, a very difficult issue for a lot of people in the neighborhoods in and around the North End. So we're going to, a lot of our recommendation, recommendations are emphasizing pedestrian accommodations, emphasizing bike accommodations, improved transit connections, ways that we can encourage people to not need a car. And in, you know, some recommendations that relate to improved transit as well. So people can travel longer distances and not be so reliant on their own feet if they can't be. And I think something that Trish talked about earlier is the citywide transportation plan, which is likely to take a much more comprehensive view of the transportation network than this plan was able to.
Although I will add that the from Admiral Calves up to Cottington, I think has the potential to reduce unnecessary traffic from turning right at Admiral Calves and perhaps going straight. I mean, right now you have to, well, in the future, you will have to make a decision about whether you go left or right when you arrive at Admiral Calves. And I think that to the degree that additional connectivity to Cottington can be enhanced with an extension of Halsey Street, that would probably create more incentives for people to go that way if they're heading north on the island than to take a right and then take a left. So I think there's opportunities here to reduce traffic on Calves with a Halsey Street extension, but we have not studied that at a, at a regional scale. But it's, it's logical that it would potentially encourage more people to go the other way. So they wouldn't have to get tied up in roundabout traffic. They could potentially skip that as well if their destination was to go north. So now that may not come as good news to people who live adjacent to those areas. So there's always going to be trade-offs here.
But am I still, yeah, I'm still here. Right. My contention is that the heavy traffic, I mean, not necessarily cars, cars would be fine. Trucks, all kinds of trucks, heavy, heavy. It's, I do not know how many tons they weigh. This is a residential area regardless. There may be a corridor at the moment, but we have houses to the left and houses to the right. So
Yeah, so the signage directs the trucks on Admiral Calves Road, and it would be great if the signage directed the trucks on the Cottington Highway. And there's the DOT meeting on Tuesday, and that would be great information for them to hear. But there's a lot of people here tonight that are, that are hearing your concerns. And I think it's an opportunity for the city to, to take some action.
Well, I, I think that if, if the city explained the situation that our quality of life and pollution, we are being compromised, absolutely. Because it just goes beyond the noise. It's just the weight. Our walls tremble when certain vehicles who are not respecting the speed limits, they pass by on Calves to go to West Main Road. So perhaps the heavy traffic should be mandatory for them to take the other way around, to go around and just allow the traffic of cars, small vehicles to go on Calves. Not this traffic that is just plain and simple trucks, gigantic trucks.
Peter, can you talk a little bit about how the, the connectivity information in this plan will intersect with future transportation master planning?
Yeah, and I'll, I mean, I think what Mr. Abago said makes a lot of sense. But you know, I think one of the things we're going to look at in the transportation master plan is what we do for mode share to try and get vehicles on the, or get people out of vehicles. And in smaller vehicles that are less impactful on the neighborhoods of the city. I think it's a huge issue. And Admiral Calves is one of the places where it's felt worse than in the city. But there's lots of people throughout the city that have similar issues. And you know, we have these weight restricted streets. Unfortunately, Admiral Calves Road is a state road and it's a marked state highway, so we can't put those signs up. But if we can figure out a way to make it so it's not a state highway, you know, we could look at doing something like that.
So, so in that, in that case, then if we cannot change anything, which I hope that we will be able to change it, then we might as well just allow the speed limit to be 55 miles an hour. Because like I said, the 25 miles an hour, although we have the school behind us, doesn't mean anything at all. People do walk on Calves and people do cross the intersections. They do cross the street. But nobody respects the 25 mile an hour, especially the heavy trucks. And I'm talking construction trucks, delivery trucks, all kinds of trucks, the ones that take the food to the supermarkets. The ones that are about 40 feet long, those are the ones that I'm referring to. 25 miles an hour means nothing at all. And this endangers the population of the transit that actually walks and bikes and live on Calves Road. So something has to be done. Otherwise, let's just change the speed limit and allow everybody to go freely on Calves as they, as they continue to do.
Okay.
So I mean, one possible thing that could be looked at is there was a traffic calming resolution the council adopted recently looking at streets in that vicinity. And there's some counselors in attendance tonight and maybe you could get in contact with them. Their information is available on the website and look at, you know, talking to them about what the possibilities are for traffic coming on Admiral Calves Road.
That would be brilliant. Thank you. That would be brilliant. I would very much enjoy that. Thank you.
You might benefit from one recommendation of the study, which is to put a traffic signal at Gerard Malbone and Admiral Calves. Putting a full signal at that location may do more for discouraging some through traffic if they see a quicker way by going another route. That was one of the major intersections that the community had identified as being particularly dangerous for pedestrians. So that's, that's a very strong recommendation to signalize that intersection.
Anything that we can do would be, I think, beneficial, but it has to, something has to be done, absolutely. So I welcome all the suggestions and anything that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things I'm concerned about is that the, the consultants have presented a vision. And it's about, you know, the kind of city we envision growing in these, these parcels that will eventually become available. We haven't had a lot of questioning about that. Does anybody have any questions about the the vision for growth that was presented in the plan? Jeff, no?
I have comments, not questions.
Okay, well, we'll get to that. So are there any other, I, I see that Rex LeBeau still has a hand up. Do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, this is Rex LeBeau again. I was just wondering about the existing small businesses in the study area and whether or not there would be any, any ways to protect their existence as well.
The answer is yes. We specifically created a zone to protect the the existing small co-op project, the, Chris, help me out here, the Tradesman Center, which we recognized as being a, a very vibrant and good opportunity for entrepreneurial ship. So we have identified that area as an area that is in some ways protected by the zoning that we're proposing for it. In addition, most of the businesses along Cottington and along JT Connell are more or less protected from undue pressures, let's say, to convert them to residential, which might be a stress on various parcels. So we are protecting the existing business uses in the area because we understand, as Trish mentioned before, the importance of this as a jobs center. So we are protecting that. And in addition, the job producing uses, there is a limit on the other kinds of uses that are the job producing uses, there is a limit on the other kinds of uses that are, are being, that would be allowed within all of the areas. We've thrown some numbers out there such as a maximum of, I think, Chris, it's thirty percent residential is the maximum because we don't want to see this area become a residential community. We want it to continue to provide jobs. I think there's a limit on hotels because we don't necessarily want to overly extend the tourist economy here. We want a year-round economy, although some hotels that focus more on business might be appropriate for this district. In other words, we're trying to protect this as a jobs center and and there is additional equity elements in there that developers could provide in terms of incubator space or small business spaces as one of the amenities that they could provide. I will tell you that that did not rank very high in the community ranking, but it is still in the plan as a potential.
Thank you.
And I think just one, one thing to note is that, you know, the, the plan does have recommendations for supporting small businesses, but those requirements for land uses and the, yeah, the actual requirements for what gets developed are, are going to be part of zoning. So the plan, the plan has recommendations related to small businesses and related to business zones versus mixed-use zones, but the, it'll, it'll, the rubber will hit the road with zoning.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so are there any other questions by members of the public? I don't see any here. So as I said at the beginning of the, the evening, we would welcome your questions all the way until the end of the month and we can with the, the consultants will be available to answer these questions. Some of them that are more technical or more specific to local planning and zoning, Trish and Peter may be able to answer, but with this in mind, I think what we'll do is continue unless there are any, any additional questions for the consultants. I think we'll call for a motion to continue this to the November 5th meeting. Are there any additional question, any additional questions? Oh, okay. So is there a motion to continue this public hearing to November 5th?
Chair, if I may, can you, before we motion to continue, can, can you explain this framework of the meeting, the next meeting that we're discussing this? Like today's meeting framework was a presentation.
Yeah.
Questions public, what's the next meeting's framework?
So it's a, a two-part framework. We had anticipated a little bit more public input. So the next meeting will be open, continue the public hearing and listen to public comment. You know, we focused on question before, but now we're going to try to solicit people's opinions. So that'll be the first thing. And then the second thing is there is a potential for us to, us as board members to offer recommended changes. And so between now and then, if you have concerns or recommended cha-changes, I would like you to submit those to Trish and Peter so that after the public comment, there'll be an amendment process where the board collectively reviews suggested amendments from other board members. And then there will be a, a final part where we act, actually have to make, we do have to do kind of technical housework. One minute, Trish, and where we have to, Trish, you can talk about that, amend the comp plan. Trish, do you want to talk about that?
Um, I, I mostly I wanted to respond to Jeff's question about what happens at the next meeting. One of the things that's also really important is what happens between this meeting and the next meeting. There's been a request from the residents to have this meeting, to have sort of an introduction of the plan, to be able to take away this information and have some time to develop, to further understand the plan and to develop follow-up cre- questions. So that's a really important component. And that's a reason why we're going to provide two weeks of time between these two meetings so that people could use this video as a tool along with the plan to develop any additional questions that they may not have in mind right now. So that will happen. In addition to following up all of the details from this plan, we also need to take a look at those those edits to the comprehensive plan that need to be incorporated that are actually to the 2017 plan to introduce the urban plan. There's a couple of pages of different edits for that too. So we have a couple of things scheduled for that meeting, but we need to also see what kind of response we get from the public during this two-week period.
So just to reiterate, Madam Chair, you want us, the board members, to write out our series of amendments and changes like May?
Yeah. If it's, it, it, so I, I've been going through and there's, there are typos, things like that. Anything that's grammatical or non-substantive, those don't need a, those don't need a motion to approve. Those can just be submitted to staff. So I'm talking about major textual amendments.
Yeah, I, because I have changes to the new schedule is my biggest concern.
Yeah, so you, you'll present something to the board and then we'll, we'll deliberate. Any other, any other questions by board members? Okay.
I just want to make sure six PM start time on the fifth is okay with folks.
Fine with me. So I want to thank Alan and Chris so much for your, your work this evening. Thank you for, for your, you know, diligent attention to the, to, to our city for the last six months. Thank you for conducting the outreach and thank you for producing a beautiful plan. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thank you to the board for, for, this is going to be now, this is going to be yours now. You're, you get to, you get to live with this document. So make it, make it work. Make it your own and then make it work.
Alrighty, thanks. Is there a motion to continue this meeting to November 5th?
No move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Will the second, will Melissa please record the vote?
Kim Salerno.
Aye.
Jeff Brooks.
Aye.
Stephen Berlucci. Sorry, Stephen, we didn't get you. You can do a thumbs up if you want to say aye. Okay, I'll come back around. Elizabeth Fuerte.
Aye.
Paul Marshall.
Aye.
Don Olivera.
Aye.
Melissa Padavina, aye. And Stephen Berlucci, I think.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that, that's it tonight for the North End Urban Plan. We'll just be moving through the rest of the agenda for now.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the, next is a presentation and discussion of reports. We have the coronavirus pandemic response report. Normally, Liam Barry does this, but Melissa or Jeff, Jeff, do you want to handle this?
Sure. Um, Liam put out a rough draft to a couple of us, but we need to speak with city staff on how we want to have it presented to the board to have us discuss further. Basically, he wanted to put out, which I, I like what he's doing, is essentially a memo for us to send to city council on how to better codify or have written out on how to handle during an emergency or disaster on allowing for businesses to fall out into the street, allowing for social distancing if that's required, things of that nature. And in the meantime, we worked with Amanda and it looks like we're going to be able to open up South Broadway, which is pretty cool. So we'll see how that goes on Sunday. Hopefully weather cooperates.
So the idea is to take the, the process that Amanda underwent and sort of streamline that so that other locations could?
No, no, not what Amanda did, more like to to make it, to codify it to where businesses can stroll out onto parking spaces like how much of Broadway and elsewhere in city where those places pulled out.
Okay, so not a special event, but a
Not a special event, just, yeah. So some mandate or
Interesting. Paul, did you have a question?
Think, yeah, I was just expanding on, on Jeff and with Liam. I, I think his idea was that we put in, we put a recommendation into city council so that if there ever was a state of emergency, that there would be protocol put in place for restaurants or business owners to kind of have a, have a set ti- set precedent of how the process could work where they could expand using what, kind of like how Amanda came in front of city council and and was able to close down Lower Broadway this week. So work in progress, but it's good.
Good, good. Melissa, do you have anything to add to it? Okay, so anything else in addition to the coronavirus? You know? Okay, so I'm going to call for a motion to amend the agenda to include a staff report, just so that Trish can do a little bit of housekeeping. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to include staff report?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Melissa, will you please record the vote?
Kim Salerno.
Aye.
Jeff Brooks.
Aye.
Stephen Berlucci.
Aye.
Elizabeth Fuerte.
Aye.
Paul Marshall.
Aye.
Don Olivera. Melissa Padavina, aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is the staff report.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I had mentioned earlier in the meeting that there's two important transportation meetings going on this week. The first one's on the 27th, which is the RIDE Up Plan, where they're going to talk about the development of the ramp realignment and where the status of the plans is, and they're going to take questions from the public. And then on the 29th, statewide planning is going to be working on the unveiling of the long-range transportation plan, which we think is going to correlate very nice with what we're doing with our city's transportation plan. So both of those meetings are really important and if you can attend, I highly recommend it. They're both two meetings and the information is available online above the login. And then I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Take It Outside grant that the city's gotten for COVID recovery. We are right now working on, on providing some heaters for local businesses so that they can extend their outdoor eating season or the outdoor business season. And we're also working on with a local company in Portsmouth to see if they can quickly change their operations to create tents for us instead of sales. And so we're hoping to get some business for a local sale maker who's going to be a local tent maker and be able to provide some tents for local businesses to continue outside for, for the rest of the season and then again in the spring. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on the Take It Outside grant? How much money was it?
Seventy-five thousand. So it's not a lot for the number of businesses that we actually have outside, so we're trying to spread it out as much as we can. And supposedly there's a second round and we might be eligible for a second seventy-five thousand. So we're, we're, we have our hat in the ring for that, but we haven't heard yet.
Good, great. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I heard we're having a Broadway fair this weekend.
It's not a Broadway fair, it's not a Broadway fair.
Well, whatever it is, broad, broad, it's, it's going to be opening up, Jeff, for businesses. Fully supportive, but I, I thought we were deliberating something like that. So how did it come about? Fully supportive, but I need some background on that.
Um, I, I can help out with that a little bit. So if you remember at our last planning board meeting, Amanda Gallagher from Closet Revival gave us a communication from herself and several of the merchants on that lower Broadway section. So what we did was we, Jeff, Paul, Liam, myself, Peter, we met with her to try and come up with some ideas on how they could come out onto the street or even do a temporary street closure. Same way folks are coming out on different parts of Broadway or different parts of the onto sidewalks and everything to work with COVID. Same thing up in Providence where they closed at Wells Avenue for a bit on the weekends. So what happened was Amanda went for an event permit, which can, which can kind of confuse the situation, make it sound like, oh, we're doing the Broadway Street Fair. That's not at all the intention because we don't have outside, the Broadway Street Fair brings in a lot of outside vendors and everything. This is more like we're doing it as an event permit, we're closing the street. The existing vendors are going to have that space to come out and spread out. Almost like, oh, she had a great term for it, an open air market for that, for that area. So she put in an event permit with the city clerk's office. They had a quite extensive COVID nineteen application form that went with that now. And, and Jeff, I think, was a great help to Amanda in getting that done. I, I kind of glazed over at the number of pages it was. But yeah, so with the support of folks in the public, the, I'm, I know several members of the city council, planning board. The city manager actually went ahead and approved that. They're all set. They can start this Sunday. It didn't have to wait to get in front of the council, so it worked out, it worked out really well. It's in line with a lot of the other permitting that's gone on for other businesses to help them out.
Is, is it just for this Sunday or is it going, I, I'm all in favor of it. I mean, there's no doubt about it. It, it, but is it this Sunday or the next Sunday, the next Sunday? What, what is it, what is it?
It's, it's this Sunday and I believe, I don't, Jeff, do you know the answer to that question? Because my understanding was it was going to be hopefully for four Sundays, but we had already gotten past one of those by the time her event permit got approved. So
I, I don't know. I thought she was, I was a little confused by that, that where she basically just got the conditional for this Sunday with like a rain date for the following week. And I feel like she's going to, but I, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll try and find out more about that.
Yep, just, just information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? The meeting is over. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Will Melissa please record the vote?
Kim Salerno.
Aye.
Jeff Brooks.
Aye.
Stephen Berlucci.
Aye.
Fuerte.
Aye.
Paul Marshall.
Aye.
Don Olivera.
Aye.
Melissa Padavina, aye. The ayes have it.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night now.
Aye. Good night. Peace. Let me drink, let me drink.